I'd like to bring the meeting to order. And first of all, thank you for coming, braving the weather. We appreciate that. And thank you, those of you who are following us on livestream. Obviously, I am not Mayor White. Unfortunately, she is under the weather, so I am the pinch hitter this evening. That said, Mr. Martin, if you wouldn't mind doing the honors of the invocation?
Sure.
It's Terry's turn.
Counselman Carter.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pre-assigned? Pardon me. Ms. Carter, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, please stand, pray. Gracious and loving God, thank you for this special time when we come together as a town, a beloved community, to do the work that is important to all of us. We're grateful for all who are here tonight, both in person and online. We're also grateful for the enthusiasm and engagement of our citizens. Let us, as councilors, be ever mindful that we are serving on our citizens' behalf. Help us as we deliberate to make decisions that are important for our town. Help us to be gracious and patient with one another. We do ask a special blessing for our neighbors who have lost their homes in the last week. Give them strength as they navigate the days ahead. For all these things, we will give you thanks. Amen. If you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I'm so sorry. We switched to a new software for our livestream, and this would be the second meeting that we've used it, and it tells me it's not working. So, we are recording. We will have a video, and we can try to reboot the encoder while we're rolling on, but I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I shall restrain myself from commenting on Spectrum's incredible succession, yes, failures. That being said, the first order of business is public hearing, and the chair is aware there is a motion.
Yes, sir. Point of order, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we continue this first item on the agenda for two months to give the council time to study this and wrap our heads around it.
Question, Councilman Kraft, to the July meeting?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just a quick message, if I could. I would thank you, all of you who showed up tonight to participate. We received over 70 emails from citizens like you expressing your concerns about billboards in the airport district on Long Beach Road. Just so you know, the planning board vote was four to three in favor of the recommended two billboards, with Kerry McCullough, Mark Spicer, and Doral Gilbert opposed. But thanks again for coming.
Is there any other discussion? If not, Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to note for the record that the July meeting was July 9th, if we could state that.
Recession to July 9th. So noted. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bach?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
Yes.
And Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. The next order of business are two text amendments. They are related but distinct. Mr. Kirkland.
If you'll excuse me very briefly while I click through the slides for the first public hearing, we'll get rolling with the others. Bear with me just a moment here. Clicking. It's lighting up, but it's not. Bear with us just a moment.
Could you kindly step closer to the microphone?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Bear with us just a moment while we work through some technical difficulties there. Hang on just a minute while we get to that agenda item and the presentation for tonight. All right. So as you just mentioned, we have two public hearings tonight. They are somewhat interrelated, the first being a proposed text amendment to the unified development ordinance. This particular agenda item deals with off-premise signs and a proposed highway overlay district. So, staff has received several inquiries, no formal applications, but people asking questions about off-premise signage, about signage on vacant pieces of property. We brought that item to the planning board for discussion in January, continued that discussion in February, and then in March, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend a text amendment to town council to address off-premise signage in the town. The proposed text amendment would do two things. First, it would reduce the maximum permitted height of column or pole signs to 15 feet. Our comprehensive land use plan recommends a reduction in signage height in the town. In addition, scaling the maximum area, so the actual size of the sign face, down to 150 square feet in the CLD zoning district. It's already at a lower amount in the CB, which is the commercial district here in the island. Secondly, the next portion of this would be to create a highway overlay zoning district, which would restrict permanent off-premise signs anywhere that overlay district is applied. You may ask yourself, well, what's an overlay district? An overlay district is a zoning tool that does exactly what it says. It lays over top of the regular zoning district. So let's say you have a piece of property that's zone CLD. This would not change the zoning of that piece of property. Any permitted development on that piece of property would remain. An overlay district is a tool that we can use to either increase or reduce restrictions within wherever that district is set up while maintaining that base zoning district. So, commercial property would still be commercial, but there would be an extra layer of regulation wherever that district was applied. This particular overlay district, as I mentioned, would be proposed to restrict permanent off-premise signs wherever that overlay is proposed. So, our comprehensive land use plan does touch on a couple of items related to signage in the town. And one of the main ones that staff and the planning board looked at in relation to this text amendment is that very first one, to base the size and height of signage upon the commercial square footage and/or number of housing units the sign is associated with. The main issue we were running into was that in our current zoning ordinance, if you're zoned, you're allowed however many signs are permitted in that zoning, whether the property is developed or not. So basically, you could have a vacant piece of property with a sign on it. That doesn't really jive with this because if you follow this logically, if there's no development on that piece of property, if there's no commercial square footage or housing, then there should not be a sign because we're relaying that size and height of signage on the actual development of the piece of property. And there's also a few other guidance items in here, but that first one was the one that was really discussed. The second one, or the, let's see, the fourth bullet item and the fifth bullet item relate to the recommendation to reduce the height and size of signage in the CLD and for pole signs in general. So the planning board voted unanimously to initiate this text amendment and forward it to the town council with a recommendation for approval. So should town council concur with the planning board recommendation, you can make a motion to approve the proposed text amendment and adopt the associated consistency statement. The next public hearing we have would be the zoning map amendment to apply that overlay district, should council vote to approve the proposed text.
So I think we have a natural break here, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, questions from council?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. I have some questions. The first is, on the previous slide you just showed, Mr. Kirkland, sign ordinance considerations. Limit the height of freestanding signs to 12 feet or less. I'm curious why the planning board chose 15 feet instead of 12 feet?
Because the height limitation that's in our zoning ordinance specifically for pole signs applies to all commercial zoning districts. So it's the same whether you're in the CLD, the CB, anywhere. The staff did an eyeball survey of pole signs, especially here on the island, and the vast majority of them are at about 15 feet. So we tried to peg the size of the sign that would be allowed to what we actually see development-wise here on the island, instead of going for the 12 feet, which could put a majority of signs throughout the town into a non-conforming situation. So we tried to peg it to what we actually saw here on the island.
Okay. And I have a couple of questions that pertain to this item and to the next public hearing. How many off-premise signs are currently located in the Middleton Road corridor?
Staff did a drive-through survey, and we were able to identify one currently.
And then how many are in the Long Beach Road corridor in the town limits?
We were able to identify three, two of which are town for par three. These are par three signs that are on the airport, would be considered off-premise.
Okay. I'll stop with that. I have some other questions, but I'll save them for the overlay district specifically.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
I was going to ask, Matt, how many signs were out there? You say there's one?
One that we were able to identify. Yes, sir.
On Middleton?
Yes, sir.
Is it under 15 feet?
Oh, no, sir. It would not be compliant with this. It would be illegal nonconformity at that point.
Does the planning board plan to grandfather that in, or immediately send a letter telling them they're out of compliance?
It would be illegal nonconformity, subject to the rules and regulations of our ordinance. So, legal nonconformities are allowed to continue. You don't have to go tear something down just because it's now legally nonconforming. The threshold for damage or maintenance is 75% of the value of the structure. So it would still be able to be maintained. Basically, 75% of that threshold, you're looking at something being almost completely destroyed at that point.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Lastly, I know we're far, many months away from a revised comprehensive land use plan. So instead of waiting for that to be brought forward, you just felt to get this done now?
We had had enough inquiries from the public about this topic that we felt it was worthy for discussion. Yes, sir.
One last question, and I will hush. On page 15, second line, actually, discourage internally laminated signage where possible. That's subjective or ambiguous.
Yes, sir. It could be considered that way. Yes, sir.
How's it enforced?
Well, that's our comprehensive land use plan. That's a guiding document. That's not a regulatory document. So, what we do is, when someone proposes a new rule, or whether it's staff, planning board, whoever, that's the document that we look at to say, is this in line with the plans of the town? So if someone came in with a proposal for internally illuminated sign, we would present you that guidance, and it would be the planning board and the town council's decision as to whether it's possible or not at that point.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Sure. Just one, if I could. Matt, on page 19, section 1036, highway overlay district, permanent off-premise signs are not permitted in the overlay district, is shown on the Town of Oak Island official zoning district map. For the edification of everybody in attendance, could you clarify that, please?
What portion do you need clarified?
Is that, so that's the proposed language?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I was looking for.
Yes, sir. Anything in your proposed ordinance that you have, just like you said, for the edification, red is a change in the ordinance, underlines or additions, strike throughs or deletions. So that would be proposed new language. Yes, sir.
So the next hearing will actually talk about the overlay district itself, the location?
Yes, sir. Because it's two different types of amendments, it's good to break them out into a text amendment and a map amendment. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Martin?
My concern at this point is more so that the proposed is to add the text to section 10.36, referring to the overlay district, but we haven't had the conversation about the overlay district.
Well, this is where you would decide whether you want to establish that district in the ordinances. The next hearing is where you decide where to apply that district, and the planning board's made a recommendation on that.
Right, but that's my concern, is the modification to the text is before us at this very moment.
Well, you have to establish the rules before you can apply the rules somewhere. Yes, sir.
Before we move on, this is not in the form of a question, but just a statement. I find it unbelievably inconsistent that the planning board would attempt a protective overlay on Middleton and ignore Long Beach, and in the same session, approve billboards. I find that staggering, and it troubles me because, from my point of view, terrible public policy. There are two central arteries to the island. One's going to be protected by an overlay, and the other one is the Wild West. What is it? Whatever exists is going to be in place, and then there are no additional regulations there. It's troubling. End comment.
Mayor Protem, if I may, I'll go ahead and ask my question that I was going to hold for the overlay portion. So there is a highway overlay district in the Long Beach Road corridor in our UDO. It's in chapter 18, article 8. There is some mention of signage in that district, but my question, Matt, and I would ask the planning board chair, were he here? But my question is, did the planning board consider doing anything in the overlay district for the Long Beach Road corridor rather than just the Middleton corridor? And that goes to Mayor Protem's concerns.
Yeah, absolutely. As I mentioned in the beginning, this was a several months-long discussion with the planning board before they felt ready to make a recommendation. I hope I'm not misspeaking when I said that it was certainly something that they considered as far as where to apply the overlay district. I hope I'm not mischaracterizing anything when I say that I think a lot of the discussion that the planning board has was related to existing off-premise signage, should an overlay be proposed, as well as the development patterns that we see along Long Beach Road versus Middleton that is largely vacant, for the most part, within the town. And one of the things that, going back to the very beginning, when we brought this up, so the first step was, is this something that the planning board even wants to discuss? You know, we said, hey, this is what our ordinance says now. It doesn't regulate on versus off-premise signage. Is this even a topic to take up? And the response was yes. And I came back the next month with a few options for how you might go about doing that. And one of the options we gave to them would be a potential even blanket townwide. You know, we don't want any permanent off-premise signs in the town at all. And this is the strategy that the planning board chose to go with. Any other questions or discussion for me?
Hearing none. Proceed, please.
That's all I have for you this evening. I don't know whether anybody signed up for the public hearing or not.
I have a few people on the public hearings sheet that didn't indicate what public hearing they wanted to sign up for. So, David Merkel?
Yeah, I was going to speak to this issue.
Okay. Okay, so I'll put you on general comments. And Fred Paddock? Are you speaking to this hearing, Mr. Paddock, or to general comments?
No, it's just...
Okay, so I'll put you on general comments. Baron Young?
Here.
Okay.
I'm going to speak to you, or is there a question?
Yes, sir, if you'll come to the podium. Some people had signed up for both hearings, so I'm not sure how council would handle that.
I signed up for both because it wasn't clear to me exactly which one was in regards to the ordinance on Middleton.
I understand.
So, should I speak now, or wait?
Yes, I think so.
Certainly.
All right. Well, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Baron Young. I was born and raised here in Brunswick County. My family's been here since before the Great Depression. I own two tracts of land on Middleton Boulevard, one in the intersection across the street from the Lowe's Food Center, and another large 300-acre tract in behind that. I am against this overlay zone for a multitude of reasons I can't cover in three minutes, but I'll condense it the best I can and say, number one, I pay a lot of property taxes to the Town of Oak Island, tens of thousands of dollars worth. And I'm asking you guys to consider rejecting this because I'd like to put some more of these signs on my property to help me pay the taxes that I owe to the town every year, help me cover it. I probably pay somewhere between 35 and 40 grand a year in city taxes, and I don't feel like the town has given me much in return for that, other than zoning in ordinances. So, cut me some slack and reject this so that I can have some help paying taxes to you guys every year. The other thing is, too, is from the point of view of a private property owner, I feel like it's an infringement on personal liberties and private property rights to tell me what I can and can't do with my own property. The other thing is, I'm glad I heard one of the board members point out the inconsistency. You have other property owners that you've let do whatever they want with their property and put up whatever they like to tell me I can't put some signs on my property to help me pay my taxes to you guys. I don't think I need to expand on that any further. I don't have any more to say.
I'll yield my last minute.
Thank you.
Glenn Baker? Are you speaking to this hearing? Okay.
Good evening, council. I'm Glenn Baker of 110 Northeast 16th Street. Good evening, well, I was going to say mayor, but Protem, Mayor Bach, and esteemed members of the town council. I am addressing the proposed billboard zoning district from Middleton Avenue. As it stands, this proposal appears to align with our comprehensive land use, although with a little bit of a tweaking, which I'm understanding that in the near future it's going to be rewritten. And Councilman Kraft, on his Facebook page, his official Facebook page, said that the general public will have an opportunity to provide what they think should go in the comprehensive land use plan. So I appreciate that, Councilman Kraft. I urge you to carefully consider passing the zoning billboard district overlay. With the potential influx of residents in areas like Williamson Tract and the mainland, we must ask ourselves if Middleton Avenue should bear the same visual clutter as Long Beach Road does currently have now. I'm extremely happy that Councilman Bach brought up the contradiction between Long Beach Road and Middleton. And I asked that myself, what's the difference between the two? Why isn't this applied to both of those locations? In conclusion, I implore you to weigh the long-term consequences of permitting billboards on Middleton Road, which would contradict with our comprehensive land use plan. Let us uphold the essence of our town, prioritize the well-being of our residents. Council members, we look to you to safeguard the interests of Oak Island residents, voters, and future generations. Thank you for your attention.
Joey Lemmons?
Thank you for your time. I'm here on behalf of Baron Young. I'm a friend of his, and a friend of the family. Baron's told me a little about the history of why their property's in the city, okay? Baron's grandfather exited into the city of Oak Island, I don't know, probably 15 years ago or so. And that was back whenever the cities around the state could actually go in and basically force people in, okay? And so, I think he was fixed with a dilemma of, do I get forced into St. James, or do I get forced into Oak Island? And his comment to Baron was, I'd rather be in Oak Island. I think those people would be more reasonable. And so, his grandfather put a lot of faith in y'all. He's a large landowner. When I say large landowner, you know, 300, 400 acres. It's right at an interchange, at the crossroads of 211 and 906. And quite honestly, I develop property in the upstate of South Carolina, and it's a perfect location for a shopping center, for a commercial development. And I understand y'all's situation, wanting to protect the island itself as far as, you know, it'd be quaint and kind of have that feel to it. But at the same time, this property's not on the island. It's off the island. And what I would recommend, you know, just as something to consider, is, I know y'all want a nice corridor coming in, you know, to look at and everything. I drove it when I came in today, and it was basically four miles, over four miles, from the intersection of those two roads all the way to the intercoastal waterway, almost four miles. And that's a lot of corridor, of pristine corridor. And for what Baron has told me, the 3,000 acres that's behind his, I think they want to develop that eventually from a housing or whatever. But, you know, when you have houses, you've also got to have commercial development, you know, grocery stores, things like that. What I would recommend is maybe, you know, you're looking at 21,000 linear feet of corridor. Maybe the property around those interchanges, you give a commercial zone right there, say, okay, for the first 1,500 feet, we'll let development go on, not just commercial development, also billboard signs and stuff like that. And I will say, billboard signs are important to businesses, just as important as for, you know, campaign signs that are for politicians, run for politicians. So, just keep in mind, they're trying to promote their businesses, and billboard signs do have available importance.
Thank you, sir. Could we get your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. It's Joey Lemmons, and my address is 1,000 College Drive, Gaffney, South Carolina. And I'm in the billboard business, and also I'm in the signage business. And I could tell you a few things about your ordinance that I can see that you're going to have problems with. Now, I've shared some information with the planning department, because I deal with a lot of counties around the state of South Carolina, North Carolina. And I think that you need to take a real serious look at y'all's ordinance, because it has a lot of holes in it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I believe that's all I have signed up for the hearings, although some people signed up for both of them, so.
Matt, is there a further description you want to offer?
Yes, sir. You have the planning board's recommendation in front of you.
Sorry, no, sir. You had the planning board's recommendation in front of you.
Matt, I know, sometimes recommendations, we have a staff recommendation as well. Did this come with a staff recommendation?
Staff recommends approval.
So, a follow-up question, Matt.
So a follow-up question, Matt. I don't disagree with the concept of trying to better regulate signs. And I certainly don't disagree with making sure we try to better align with the comprehensive land use plan. I think what I continue to struggle with is is the recommended that we reduce the size of the signs. I'm okay with that. But I still go back to this, including the text that suggests that we will create an overlay district when I'm not even sure if an overlay district is gonna make it tonight. I don't know. It might, but I have problems with the overlay district. But maybe define a little bit better precisely the off-premise signs. So if a property owner owns land, even if it's undeveloped, signage on that land isn't off-premise. Is that correct?
Yeah, so off-premise signs are signs that advertise for a business or a use or anything that's not on the property that the sign is on. So if, say you have a vacant piece of property. One of your friends has a business a mile down the road. You say, "I'm not doing anything with this piece of property. Come put up a sign to advertise for your business." That would be off-premise, because your sign is not on the same premise as the use that you're advertising for.
Correct. And the overlay district, at this point, the way it's submitted, would not prevent off-premise business signs scattered throughout the town of Oak Island that we have today already.
So... So the ordinance currently has a sign allotment for business development. Usually it's usually one sign for a piece of property. There's instances where maybe you have a corner lot or something like that, where there's extra allowances in there. But typically, on a developed piece of property, if you're developing a business, you want your sign allotment, your one sign that you're allowed to advertise the business that is on your piece of property. Where we mostly see off-premise sign considerations is on vacant property that's under the current regulation, still has that sign allotment. Let's say you're in the CLD, you're allowed, under the current regulations, one pole sign up to 200 square feet, up to the height maximum that's in there, whether you are developed for a business or not. So you still have that same allotment, that sign allotment, under the current ordinance. What we looked at with the comprehensive land use plan is that it very clearly wants us to try to scale the size, the signage on the property, to the size of development. So if there's no development on that property, it would follow that there be no signage on that property as well if you're scaling it one to the other. So this would not prevent somebody who develops a commercial business in the CLD in this highway overlay district from advertising with a sign on their property for their business. And I think the signage that the planning board and town staff was looking at was the vacant properties. How do we get at that? And restricting off-premise signage seemed like the logical way, because there's no business development there, and it ties into our comprehensive land use plan as well.
So there would still be a benefit tonight of approving the text amendment, even if we striked out the overlay district? Because we could come back later, after the comprehensive land use plan has been updated, and reconsider overlay districts at a broader view, not just on one thoroughfare in the town.
I mean, you have the language in front of you. Counsel can obviously adopt a modified version of whatever the planning board recommended to you.
But I guess my question is, there would still be benefit to improving sign regulations with the size reductions that are in the text amendment?
It would reduce the size, the overall size and the maximum height, yes, sir.
Okay.
Matt, the one sign that is in existence now, that will stay there unless it is destroyed 75%.
Yes, sir.
Is that in Mr. Young's, on his property?
I'd have to go back and check. I haven't looked at the property owner records for the signs that we saw. It's the, if you go out, it's the Lowe's Food sign on the left if you're driving out of town on Middleton.
Second question. One of these days, maybe before I die, there's gonna be some commercial development out there off 211. If we vote this into existence tonight, does that mean if there's a shopping center similar to Food Lion and the Chinese restaurant, the dentist office, that they won't be able to do off-premise signage saying, "Two blocks down is the State Farm Office"?
Well, they'd be able to do signage on their property, advertising their business.
But not on the prestigious corner?
Potentially not, yes, sir, yeah.
Okay.
So the benefits of breaking this apart, which Mr. Martin suggested, would be that we would have the benefit of a revised land use plan and could think more holistically about all the corridors. I don't read anything in this that would preclude billboards. Does this make it difficult to put up a billboard?
Well, when you would reduce the... So billboard is essentially usually constructed as a large pole or column type sign.
Okay, so it's restricted to 150 square feet and 15 feet?
15 feet tall. And once again, it couldn't be off-premise. Usually a billboard advertises for businesses in the region or the area, not the business that's on the property.
So this would provide some relief?
Yes, sir.
But not total relief, because you're still gonna have pole signs.
You could still have a pole sign, yes, sir.
Anything else from counsel? Mr. Martin, do you have a motion to break these apart?
I'm going to close the public hearing first.
Pardon?
Will you do a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
I'm making a motion to close the hearing.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Play it forward again, John. I'm sorry. So we have two public hearings tonight, and the motion is to break up the first public hearing into two and have the second public hearing? I'm trying to follow this, and I'm not following this.
I don't want to make Mr. Martin's motion. Why don't you go ahead and make it?
The... I was exploring the idea of approving or trying to approve a text amendment tonight to reduce the size of the signage as it's recommended by the planning board. But we would strike Section 10.36 overlay district. That would be stricken from the text amendment until we had an updated comprehensive land use plan, where we could then consider overlay districts at a broader view instead of a very narrow-focused overlay district tonight, that we would table the overlay district until we had more data and more time to consider. But it seems like the other text changes provided some benefit to help regulate signs in accordance to our current comprehensive land use plan.
I think he explicated it. I used the word "break apart."
Okay.
He differentiated the two.
Okay, so if I could, so my concern in delaying this, and, you know, we've got a bit of a track record of delaying things, is if we delay this, we're gonna wait at least 18 months before the comprehensive land use plan is delivered to us, and then we'll have lots of discussions. So we have potentially two years to just continue slugging away the way we're going now. And at the planning board meeting, when they talked about the signage at the airport, I listened to it twice, and I'm paraphrasing, but the statement was made by somebody sitting at the dais that basically, "Long Beach Road looks like crap, and adding two more signs can't make it look any crappier." So, you know what, it's, we have an opportunity now. So let's talk about the overlay district afterwards, and then when we get the comprehensive land use plan, we can look and see what other modifications need to be made, additions too. But we have an opportunity now to keep our pristine Middleton Road as unblemished as possible.
If Mr. Martin's recommendation is that we're pulling public hearing number three, I'm not in agreement with that.
Can I make a suggestion? So the motion that's on the floor was to close public hearing number two. You could hold off taking action on public hearing number two, open up public hearing three, have that hearing, and then revisit action on public hearing two, once you've had that, if that makes sense.
I'm good with that.
That sounds fair.
Okay. Now, the vote I had on closing the public hearing, I didn't see Councilman Chulo. If you had voted in favor of closing, you're in favor of that. Okay, so that hearing's closed.
So is there other?
So we'll just hold, you can just hold off on action on that hearing and move to public hearing three. And then if you want to go back to public hearing two, you can.
Great. I'm gonna wait for my slides to get pulled up here, and then we'll get rolling on the second, or the third, sorry, public hearing. Yeah, turn the clock on. Excuse me, just one second. There we go. All right, about that. All right, so public hearing three. This would be a zoning map amendment for the proposed highway overlay district. I'll note that we'll go through the public hearing and the presentation, but you can't actually take action on this until you decide the action from public hearing two. Just throwing that out there when we get to the end. So the background is similar to what we just discussed. Started as a planning board discussion item in January, moved on to February. And then in March, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend a zoning map amendment to town council to establish the highway overlay district as a 400-foot corridor along Middleton in North Carolina 211. We've got the proposed overlay district here. I know you can't see my pointer, but I'm pointing it along 211. It's that hashed-in area. Usually you denote a overlay district as a hash or something like that on your zoning map, because as I mentioned earlier, the base zoning remains. So you can still see that PUD zoning underneath, the R7 zoning there, the CLD zoning. Those zoning districts don't change categorization as a part of an overlay district application. I won't belabor the adopted plan guidance, the sign-specific items. We just covered those. We'll talk a little bit about the town's future land use map. There are several future land use categories in this area. Residential mixed-use, commercial mixed-use, office institutional, thoroughfare commercial, medium-density residential, low-density residential, and open space. And I'll briefly touch on what each of those means. So the residential mixed-use is intended to accommodate non-residential and residential uses. The development is considered to be appropriate for pedestrian-oriented spaces with open space areas, minimal impact on adjacent areas, and transportation impact should be less than those from a commercial mixed-use. Commercial mixed-use, once again, a little bit different, but it allows for a concentration of commercial service and residential uses. Once again, looking for pedestrian-oriented development compatibility. And once again, a provision for open spaces is an important part of the development. There's a tiny bit of office institutional future land use out here, intended to encourage development of office institutional uses as a step down in intensity between commercial districts and nearby neighborhoods and conservation areas. There's also a portion of thoroughfare commercial out here, designed to accommodate a wide range of commercial activities located along major thoroughfares in the town. And a kind of an interesting note here is that the sectors, this particular sector is intended to be consistent with the community business zoning district. Anyone who knows our zoning map knows that the community business zoning district is the commercial district here on the island. Couple of non-mixed-use residential, mainly medium-density and low-density residential areas. Minimum provision for public services, water, sewer, et cetera. And then finally, a section of open space and conservation. These are typically areas that are town-owned, protected lands, significant wetlands concentrations, natural heritage areas, or areas of environmental concern, as defined by the North Carolina Administrative Code. So once again, some of the last ones, should town council concur with the planning board's decision? You can make a motion to approve the proposed map amendment and adopt the associated consistency statement. But as I mentioned at the beginning of this hearing, you can go ahead and hear all the public testimony and hear all the presentation and ask questions, but you would need to decide the first public hearing before taking action on this one. If Mr. Martin's suggestion to not establish the overlay district was the majority opinion of counsel, then this zoning map amendment can't even happen, because that district won't exist. That's all I have for any presentations tonight.
Questions?
I don't have anything further than the previous questions I asked.
Other questions?
Yes. So, since you brought it up, Matt, the pole sign that Lowe's Foods has that's off-premise today, you clarified that that would be legal non-conforming and would only be removed if it suffered 75%.
Well, it would have to be brought into compliance with our ordinances.
Then it would have to be brought into compliance.
Yes, sir.
Which at that point in time, it would be defined as an off-premise sign.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it would have to relocate.
Yeah, there's no Lowe's Foods on that parcel that it's on currently. Yes, sir.
Now, but my question with this overlay district is, I noticed that the highway sign overlay is not continuous.
Sure, yeah.
It's got some holes in it, if we can return to that.
Absolutely. So... It is...
So the white spaces?
Those are the county.
That's correct.
Or St. James. Those are not the town's jurisdiction. So we can't apply a zoning regulation outside of the town's jurisdiction.
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
And what is their ordinance for pole signs?
I don't know what St. James is. The county depends their off-premise signage on the frontage that it's along. So certain roads in the county have an allotment for off-premise signage. And I'd have to look at what it is from Middleton and Midway. I don't know that off the top of my head. I know that 211, I believe the allotment is 378 square feet and, I believe, 50 square, 50 feet tall. So a proper billboard. If you want to see, actually, I can show you an example of what that looks like on the first. If you want me to slide back, I can show you what that kind of sign looks like.
I'm more concerned about these gaps in this overlay district that we are reviewing and proposing to approve. While we have control over the majority of the footprint, there are gaps where off-premise signs could appear overnight.
Well, I can't make the county do any...
Right, I'm just saying, there's these gaps in the plan. So someone driving down Middleton, all of a sudden, a sign shows up in that little white area right there off of Middleton, or the other little white area, and now all of a sudden, they're gonna say, "What are you doing, Oak Island? You created an overlay district." Because the overlay district is just the hash marks, correct?
It's only in the town, yes, sir.
Right.
So I can't control what I can't control.
I understand.
But we can control what is in our zoning jurisdiction, regardless of gaps or not, yes, sir.
I have no further questions.
Please, you should take up.
Yes, sir. We have Baron Young. Did you have anything additional to add for this public hearing, Mr. Young?
I think that I said everything I needed to say.
Okay.
So, of course, if any of the council members have questions about property and their unhappy ideas, you're welcome.
And Glenn Baker? Did you want to speak to this hearing?
I've already spoken.
Okay. Yes, sir. It's just, since it's a separate hearing, I'm just making sure. And Joey Lemmons?
I think I'll join the club of being confused as to which hearing was which, but I know I talked about, I talked about primarily the overlay at the last one, but it seems like they're kind of connected. The overlay is basically trying to do away with signs, so it's, and somewhat, they're connected in that way. I just reiterate, before you pass a sign ordinance, I did a lot of counties, and most counties have all on-premise signage, off-premise signage regulations. And y'all's is kind of mingled in the middle, and it's real, I can tell you a lot of different ways this thing can go sideways. And be happy to give my industry expertise. I've been doing this 40 years, and I've seen a lot of county council, city council meetings, and how they've made mistakes, and I really feel like that y'all making a mistake if you pass it the way it is. Most billboard codes are usually spaced out linear, for example, 500 feet apart, 1,000 feet apart, whatever you want it to be. It's not, it's not like 200 square feet of that per lot. I mean, if you do that, you could put maybe 100 feet. I don't think you want that. But anyway, I just encourage y'all to slow down a little bit before you pass something you regret later. But thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
So, if it's council's pleasure, we'll take up text amendment, which is...
Yes, if you'll close this, third public hearing, and then you can revisit action for public hearing two.
I'll make a motion to close the third public hearing.
Hold in favor? Now, at least, we can take up number two.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, I would make a motion to accept the text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance for off-premise signs. I really would like to see the signs consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan of 12 feet, but I'll make the motion as the planning board submitted, and I'd be happy to have somebody amend that motion if they like.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are you in search of an amendment, councillor, or the motion is unamended, though?
If nobody amends it, I'll go with what the planning, I just think we should be more consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
So you're at the 15-foot, is that what you're saying?
15 is what they recommend. I'll go with that unless somebody will throw in 12.
Yeah, I mean, I'm at the point where I want to listen to the planning board on this one, even though I am a little apprehensive on some of the concerns I have with the overlay district, which will be our next motion, but I would concur with the 15, I would go with the 15 feet, as recommended by the land board.
Other comments?
I've often said that we ask people to devote their time to be on advisory boards and to do all the behind-the-scenes groundwork. When it comes back six to zero, it's kind of hard not to honor that. That's my thought.
Well, I'll say that although I'm troubled by the inconsistency of the planning board, in this case, forward motion is forward motion. And as my colleague, Mr. Chulo, said, we can only delay so much, and this is more protective, and in the same sense, more restrictive, which I understand the argument. But I think it's time that we adopted something like this. So, even though I would prefer it to be on both arteries and both thoroughfares and evenly administered, I'll set that aside for the moment. Anyone else? Hold on.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembach?
Reluctantly, yes.
Councilman Chulo?
Yes.
Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion, suggested motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment and adopt the associated consistency statement.
Second.
Discussion?
I would just like to say that I concur with my colleague, Mr. Chulo, and to your point, Mayor Pro Tem. Whatever we can do now is a step in the right direction. It is forward motion. We all understand that the Comprehensive Land Use Plan may show us something different that we don't know at this point in time. And as they say, when you know better, you do better. So if the Comprehensive Land Use Plan shows us that we should do something different with our overlays, we'll certainly have the opportunity to come back and change those. But for now, I think it's the protection that the citizens of this town have been asking for.
Mr. Martin?
Just a quick, another quick question for Matt. I'm sorry, Matt. So, the highway sign overlay at the intersection of 211 and Middleton, tonight, it's in the path, if I'm trying to squint hard enough, of the current interchange improvement that they're doing? The flyover?
I mean, the 211 improvement is in that, I mean, the overlay's almost essentially centered on that intersection.
So you have, that is in here now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then that little teeny little white box, is that in front of the Holiday Inn Express?
That's the Holiday Inn, yes, sir. That's not in the town's jurisdiction.
Okay. All right. I understand, we can't govern what other land under the control of, so I just have concerns that this, that we're not in a collaborative overlay. We have these gaps, but that's, there's not much we can do about it. Okay.
Any other discussion? Madam Corrigan?
Councilman Carter? Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembach?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
Yes.
And Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Thank you all, and thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And staff. So, we have three presentations. I'm going to ask the presenters to be mindful of the time allotments. And the first is on our budget, from our assistant manager slash CFO, Catherine Adams.
I am delighted to present to you...
Thank you, thank you.
...your recommended budget for fiscal year 2425, and company schedule. This will be available for the public as well upon our website.
All right. Thank you. I will go through these as quickly as I can and make sure I leave time for any questions. The three main focus areas of improvement we'll present to you tonight throughout the budget. One, the council directed us to do things that increase the customer service for our citizens. Two, to ensure compliance with our codes, ordinances, and rules. And number three, to continue to improve public safety. You can see each of the bullets below those in how this budget does address those. Quick overview, this budget is balanced with no tax increase, no increase in the tax rate at all. There's no increase in any user fees for any of the enterprise funds either. The budgeted tax rate remains at 16 cents per $100 valuation. Of our 16 cents, 13 cents is designated for general operations, and the remaining 3 cents is accounted for in the beach nourishment fund for our beach projects. Fund balance continues to remain strong. The town's general fund is in compliance with North Carolina general statutes and well over our town's internal policy to maintain a minimum total fund balance of 40%. Just briefly, through each of the funds, we have a lot of them, so bear with me, I'll try to go quickly. The general fund is balanced at 21 to 91, 154. Revenues were estimated with an average 2% growth rate in property and sales tax, and that is in anticipation of a slightly slower economic growth. We'll continue to monitor this every month, as we do currently. Also, only 1.2 million is used out of our fund balance for specific one-time capital outlay. The town is again budgeting to transfer funds from many departments to our capital reserve fund to provide funding for our future capital expenses, and about $367, $320. The water fund and the wastewater fund also balanced, the water fund at 5.7 million, again, no increase in the rates. The wastewater fund is balanced at 16 million and no increase in the rates. The sewer district fee remains unchanged at 601 and 78 cents. The stormwater fund is balanced at 1.661, and the remain, the rates remain consistent for both residential and commercial. The solid waste fund is balanced at 2.1, and those rates also remain unchanged. That's for all of the refuse, recycling, yard debris, and utilization of the town's convenience site. The top two funds are for the room occupancy tax. We have an accommodations tax fund and a beach tax fund. They too are balanced in those respective amounts. And finally, the beach nourishment fund, which is balanced at 5.7. This we utilize as a capital projects fund for our shoreline management and sand replenishment projects, and that is scheduled for 2425. Finally, the golf course fund, the pier complex, and our parking fund, all three balanced, no increase in fees. Here's some quick highlights of our capital outlay, specifically in the general fund. Again, ocean rescue, fire department, capital outlay for that public safety. We did include a climate-controlled storage unit. We're running out of space for files and offices. New vehicles for our additional code enforcement officers. And a major project coming up is a replacement of our fuel system at our Public Works facility. We'll be replacing several pieces of equipment, including a street sweeper, skid steer, and a tractor with mower, as well as a 14-passenger van and fitness equipment in the recreation center. Just some quick highlights in the enterprise funds. New mower for the par three golf course. Several improvements at the wastewater fish factory treatment plant. I won't even try to read you all of those. Wastewater collection system, also some significant improvements there. The water improvements will continue with hydrant replacement schedules and ongoing maintenance, as well as a study of capacity for future water storage needs. Finally, in stormwater, we have a dune infiltration projects that will continue, and live oak tree plantings. There are nine additional staff members recommended in the budget: three firefighters, two code enforcement officers, a GIS technician, a front office receptionist, a capital projects grant, project coordinator position, and an assistant for communications and the clerk. Our debt service is fully budgeted, as required by state law. We have a complete detail of all of that in the supplemental section of the budget. The only other debt the town has at this time is the two fire trucks that has, have previously been purchased, and we've continued with the commitment on a future ladder truck that we anticipate by 2627 for the fire department. As you know, labor is a very important part of any business. The staff here is what makes this town run. We continue to want to ensure that we provide adequate cost-of-living increases and the potential to earn meritorious increases as well. Those are funded, as well as some additional market adjustments, specifically in the police department, and a few other areas that have high recruitment challenges. Several capital projects that will commence in 2425. Here's a list of just some of them. Very proud of some of these projects that our departments have brought forward and will be working hard on for the upcoming year. In conclusion, I would be remiss without thanking all of our department directors and their staff. You have a very hard-working staff here, and I appreciate their efforts to continue to try to provide valuable services at the lowest, the most efficient way possible. Must also thank Ms. Hallie Willis and Rose Brahm. These books would not look the way they do without the production of assistance of these two, so thank you tremendously. To you, mayor and council, we certainly appreciate the effort that each of you have put in to this long process that we began back in December. We've had strategy sessions, six budget workshops with each of our departments, and it's culminated in the recommended budget before you tonight. Thank you for your continued leadership and support for the betterment of this town. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and thank, I would thank the entire staff, including department heads, Mr. Kelly's staff, for the work that they put in, and also my colleagues for the 20-some hours, 25 hours, that went into this. I will say this about this budget, it is my seventh. Every budget has a story, and that story is a description ultimately of what we value. So this budget, more than any other budget that I've been part of, is a budget that is looking towards the future. It's an investment in the future. And for the first time, we are planning ahead. The other wonderful aspect of this budget, the artistic element of this budget, is that it has maximum impact in terms of service and protection and projects, and zero impact on the tax rate. And so that is really an impressive piece of work, and I would, I would say, again, the million dollars that paid parking gave us, is 330,000, and that went into street paving, went a million dollars in street paving. The rest is subsidizing this budget, so there's no tax increase. That and a transfer from the general fund, where we still have 23 million-plus dollars. So the town is in remarkable fiscal shape. This budget is the work of many hands, the people at this table, the accounting department, and all the department heads. It's a budget to celebrate, and I think it will deliver increased service and protection. So I want to thank you for presenting it, and in such a succinct manner. Appreciate that. Questions, comments, other councillors?
I just want to echo your comments, John. Catherine, David, this is my first budget, as opposed to John's seventh, but the work that you did, the process you followed, the strategy you employed for this was logical. It made sense to all of us. It was very clear and transparent, and I believe... And I believe Mark Spicer joined us for five out of six of those budget workshops. But, you know, just great job, so proud of the work we've done. Again, echoing John's comments, but now looking to the future, being proactive rather than reactive. And kudos to you, Catherine, just an amazing job. Thank you.
Assistant Town Manager.
Yeah, no, no, ladies first.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, Assistant Town Manager, your leadership is exemplary. Thank you so much for pulling staff together and all the work that you did. This is my first participatory budget process. This is the third that I've watched, and I'll say without a doubt, this one went, went the smoothest, had the most complete information, and I saw people working really hard to make things happen for our town and for our citizens. Thank you for your leadership.
I echo what everybody else has said. For the people in the town, we came to five budget meetings, and our finance director, Mrs. Adams, would have a spreadsheet saying, this is what you spent in 2022, here's what we allocated, here's how much you spent, here's where you were in 2023, here's where you were in 2024. This is what I recommend you do in 2025. Everything was spelled out. We wrestled and wrestled over how many people to hire and how many police cars or fire trucks to get in 2024 or get in 2027. But when all the dust settled, I'll speak for everybody. I think we're very proud that we can say zero tax increase and a whole lot of services are now being provided. Hats off to you, ma'am.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I'll just echo a huge thank you to our department managers and department leads. Y'all did a great job coming in and sharpening your pencil. Great job to staff, everybody that's involved putting this together. You know, in 2023, we started making some slight changes to how we do budgeting. And I think it's reflected in the progress that we made in this year's budget. You know, we've added a financial retreat now mid-year, which helps us take a look at, at where we are as kind of a state of the union, right? We have historical trend analysis now built into our reporting. That was something new that we introduced in 2023 as well. Catherine's working on that variance report that I keep asking for. So, it's, I saw it, it's in there finally tonight. So, I'm excited to go home and read myself to sleep going through the variance report. So, just my hats off to everybody, working hard, helping to make the improvements that we hope that make this process go better year over year. And so, for, for future councils as well, I think we've got a really, really good framework in place for pushing through the budget workshops and should be, as we stated, you know, 20-some hours every year instead of 30 or 40 hours. So, thanks, thanks to everyone who participated. I appreciate it.
And if you have any difficulty falling asleep tonight, I'd recommend you read the variance report. Thank you. We have another presentation. GFL, you're on the clock, as they say.
Good evening, Council. I feel like that's gonna be an easy act to follow. I appreciate you setting the bar so high. I do have a PowerPoint. There you go. So, my name is Joshua Toller. I'm the general manager for GFL in Bolivia. I've been with Legacy Waste Industries and GFL for over 10 years. So, I'm still learning the Brunswick area, but I've got quite a bit of experience in, in the field. And when I came over here, getting acclimated to the branch, there was a few things that I noticed right off the bat. And one of which was there is a lot of highly intelligent, skilled, passionate people in this area. And I extend that compliment to some of the council people that I've met tonight. So, I've enjoyed my experiences, getting to know some people that I, that I'll deal with on a business level. So, that was all positive. And then the second thing that I learned or heard very quickly was a horrible misconception of recycle. And it wasn't once or twice, it was frequent, multiple times a week, that I really got the, the pulse and the feeling of how, how, how bad the, the image of, of recycle was over in this area. So, you know, it became something that needed to be addressed and turned into a bit of a campaign or a mission, so to speak. So, that is why I'm here tonight. I think this is probably the second presentation that you've had in a little bit. But one of the things that I realized, participating in a St. James event, which Kevin Fisher from Sunoco did a great job explaining, was I was a little bit of that missing piece of the puzzle. Because I think some of the problems, the breakdown for that misconception is what happens? What will I do with it? What does my team do with it? So, I wanted to come and hopefully truly clarify some of that misconception, clear up some things tonight. So, I really appreciate the time that you've given me to do that, and hopefully I can succeed in that goal. So, I'm gonna start with the, the operational flow. So, we're gonna assume for a second that we've done everything right from a participant's point of view, and you've, you've recycled properly and put it into your bin, and then you put it out to the curb. What happens next? Because that, I think that the next, this slide really is gonna help a lot of misconception. So, you put your cart out for a collection. A designated, and I do mean designated recycle truck runs a route to collect your curbside recycle. And I emphasize on that because it's not a mixture. It is, it is a designated truck that is designated for the route that costs a lot of money to make sure that that truck is designated. So, that designated truck runs a route and collects curbside. After that, that truck with its collection goes to the transfer station landfill. And I think this is also some of the, the breakdown that was conceived horribly wrong. So, if you were to follow that truck around the neighborhood, and yes, they're picking up recycle, and then you follow it down Highway 17 or whatnot, you're gonna see them turn into the landfill, the transfer station. And if you stop there and you don't follow it in, you're like, yep, I knew it, and they're taking it, and they're dumping it as trash. And that's wrong. That is absolutely 100% wrong. Big factor of what used to be and now is, is there's a brand-new facility at the, at the landfill, Brunswick County landfill. Prior to that building being built and utilized, they had to utilize a smaller facility. So, what would happen would be, the recycle had a timeframe. You had to dump before, let's say, 9:00 AM, and it was isolated. And then they would designate that into a truck and pull it out, and then it's switched over to MSW. And then it only took MSW from that point on. So, that perception could even still be further if you followed it in. You could say, yeah, they're still dumping it in the same spot as the trash. And it would be really easy to, to misperceive that and get the wrong perception. So, we entered to the Brunswick County Transfer Station. The recycle truck now ejects a load into a designated area. Going back to the brand-new transfer station facility that was built, there is a huge building, and this side over here is all trash and construction debris. This side over here is recycle. It is never, ever mingled at all, ever period. Due to regulations, the trash has to be emptied off the floor every night, whereas the recycle doesn't have to be. But at any point in time, you could visit that facility and see that it is isolated separately. Now, what happens next? So, now we've taken, we've collected your trash or your recycle, taken it in a designated truck into the transfer station, dumped it in a designated area. What happens next? It's loaded into a tractor trailer, still isolated, still clean. Now, a tractor trailer goes from Brunswick County landfill transfer station to Sunoco. Sunoco Recycling on 421. It is never co-mingled. It is never mingled with any, any kind of trash whatsoever. That's the clarity that I think a lot of people needed. It is never mixed. I'll, I'll go through this kind of quickly, but kind of break down a couple other factors there. Common misconceptions. Recycle's dumped into a landfill. We just covered that. It is not. It is never dumped in as trash. True, 100% of collected recycle are handled as recycle material. That's true. If you, if you collect it, you separate, you put it as recycle, it always stays that way throughout the process, all the way to Sunoco, where they will mill it, separate it, and then ship it off for consumer goods. False. It's a waste of time and money. I'm not gonna elaborate too much on that, but it's not. Here's why. The environmental impact that you're saving, the landfill space that you're saving, as well as, you know, for a large participation group, the more participants there are and the cleaner we can keep it, the costs come down, which could reflect on cheaper costs for the consumer, if everybody's following me there. Recycle is expensive due to contamination and processing. This is true. For me, it's expensive. For Kevin at Sunoco, it can be expensive. There's a lot of labor that goes into it. Contamination can really, really extend those costs upward in a major way. So, it is expensive for me. False. There's no benefit to the individual. That is also, again, false, because it will drive costs down, environmentally friendly, future of our children, things of that nature. It is one of those things that every, every participant makes a difference. So, it's, it's not someone else's problem. Everybody makes a difference. Go on to the next true slide. False. Doesn't cost GFL. It's simply a revenue stream for them. I've heard that before, you know, I get it. You're charging me. It's just a revenue stream for you. That's not the case, and I want to kind of clarify that a little bit. Going back to the designated routes, recycle versus trash, I could save a lot of money if I mixed it. If I just, truth be told, told you I did and didn't, I wouldn't have to have half the routes that I have. But I do, because we take it very, very seriously. So, I have about 21 trash routes and about 19 recycle routes. It costs a lot of money to designate those routes and keep them separated all the time. I'm sorry. I'm an early morning guy. It's getting kind of late for me. Please bear with me. Also, something to consider is, in the height of COVID and, you know, middle of 2023, the price for co-mingle product, what a, a consumer would, would collect and put curbside, it shot through the roof to the extent that it tripled in, in cost for us to process it. It was over $105 per ton for us to process it. Never once did we pass those costs along to the consumer. We could have, probably, we would be justified, but why, why would we not do that? Because we want to encourage recycling. It's the right thing to do. It's not a moneymaker for us. It's not a price gouging scenario. The market fluctuates, so whether it's X or it shoots to the roof because the demand is down, we're still trying to keep the cost as low as possible for the consumer, because it's the right thing to do, which is a big piece of why I wanted to speak with everyone today. So, it's not cheap for us, but it's, it's the right thing to do. So, we're incurring a lot of cost to make sure it's, it's handled properly. More participation creates cheaper rates for the consumers. That's true. It's a density factor for us. So, if I have to drive from here to Calabash to pick up one recycle cart, that's gonna cost me a lot of money. Now, if I pick up 500 on the way, the density, the cost goes down. So, in a town like Oak Island, the participation's high, we can offer better rates. For you, maintaining is, is, is really a key component for us and, you know, lack of contamination. But I'm gonna campaign for the entire county, because the misconception that it's not being handled right is really, really taking a back, you know, recycle's taking a backseat for that. So, I'm on a mission to, to really kind of re-educate everybody. Future's not our problem. That's false. Whether you care or not, your kids, your grandkids, they're gonna have to deal with lack of landfill space, mass consumer products, things of that nature. It will affect you or your children at some point. So, it's, it's time to do the right thing now and make a difference, and it's not too late. There are some communities that have bowed out because of this misconception, and, you know, they're like, well, it's too late. You know, there's nothing we can do about it now, and that's false. Start today. Refresh. Help us re-educate and, and really, really try to get on board for the environment. And that's, that's really the big picture here. Brunswick County Landfill Station, nearly 100% of materials redirected away from landfill to the transfer station. Nearly all products are transported to other facilities to minimize, minimize the landfill impact in Brunswick County. That's a true statement. They basically don't use the landfill anymore. They even take their construction debris into the transfer station. We haul it to Sampson County to try to save landfill space. They're even working on a potential CND reclaim project to try to salvage even more space, which goes to the next comment there. Brand-new station built to accommodate growth and better handling of all these products. In addition to recycle isolation, we also separate what we call co-mingle and clean cardboard to further impact better results for consumer products that Mr. Kevin Fisher would utilize. How can you make the biggest difference? Participate, number one, which the town of Oak Island does a great, great job for that. So, we just encourage the continued participation on it. Separate. Everybody can do better with this. Part of the reason that China pulled away from us is because they weren't getting recycle product. They were getting trash, and it was a shock and awe for us, because we all of a sudden had to take it a lot more seriously. And we're still continuing to, to learn the best way to do that. So, everybody can probably separate the recycle a little bit better. Washing food contaminants and just paying attention to what goes into your recycle cart. It's gonna help the bigger picture. Cleaner is cheaper. That's a big, big component. Educate. Help educate other people, which is, you know, part of the start of this campaign for me is to re-educate the falsehood that it all goes in the landfill, and it's, it's just simply not the case. So, work with your neighbors, your, your colleagues, your constituents, and, and really kind of refresh the, the conversation about it, because if we don't speak up, the lies will continue. So, help, help me achieve this goal for a cleaner future and a cleaner environment by, by really kind of sharing what you've heard today and, and ask questions. Kevin Fisher at Sunoco gives tours all the time on the facility on 421. Mr. Jeremy Baker gives tours at the landfill, just in case you're curious to kind of fact-check me here. There's nothing to hide here, and that's why we want to re-educate. I passed out some of these to Ms. Sue tonight to try to pass out to the town. This is part of the complication, and this is something that I heard from someone else at St. James, is where do we start? You know, we've done such a horrible job with separations and contamination. Where do we start? The biggest advice I can give you there is start clean and fresh. Glass bottles, cardboard, and you can always work up from there. So, this is a good key indicator. It hasn't changed a lot. Big problem is plastic bags. You cannot put plastic bags, like grocery bags, into your recycle. They have to be, they have to stay out. What we recommend and, and what you can do is you take those recycle bags back to the grocery store. There's some other department stores that'll handle those. Well, recycle. It works. Typically, about 80 to 85% of collected material is recycled. So, if you do the math on that, we're working with about a 15, 15 to 20% contamination rate at the processing plant level, which means we all need to try to do a little bit better job with the separations. That 15 to 20% has to be pulled out and then taken to the landfill. So, we can get that number better, but 80 to 84% of everything that you recycle is truly reused and sold as a new consumer product. Local jobs, obviously, it does for me. It does for Kevin. It's, it's a big labor factor there. Protects the environment, landfill space, reduces the need for it, as well as hauling, trucks on the road, things of that nature. Biggest point I wanted to kind of make, and I may not state this that well, but Kevin did a better job than I did. There's a big push on big companies to use recycle products, more so than there were in years past. So, what that means is, as opposed to creating new plastic, new plastic, new plastic, there's a big push on bigger, bigger companies that they have to accept recycle products for the sake of the environment. So, there's, there's a big push on a lot of levels right now. Want to steal a phrase that I heard. So, if you know better, do better, right? So, that's my goal for tonight, is to, to, to re-educate a little bit, give people to ask questions if they need to. But I think at this point, we, we owe it to ourselves and our children and our grandchildren to do better, because we know better. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, again, for being succinct. We're in a rhythm here. Questions from Council?
I have some, Josh. You said 100% of recycled trash that you all pick up from our residents is, 100% of it is given to Sunoco?
Yes.
Okay, and out of that 100%, 84% that Sunoco gets is considered recycled?
Yes.
And, and non-contaminated?
Yes.
And you used the word contaminated, so educate me. I, I don't know. If I were to put, we live here at the beach, so five months a year, we have tourists. We live here at the beach, so five months a year, we have tourists who could care less.
Yes, sir.
And tourists, or myself, hopefully not myself, will take a milk jug that has two inches of milk still in it and put it in the recycle thing, with or without a cap, and then throw in a Heinz ketchup bottle without a cap. At what point does that become contaminated?
Food products are bad, if I'm being honest. So going back to the milk example, a little bit of milk's probably not going to be the end of the world, but ideally, you would dump it down the drain and wash it, but at least dump it down the drain and then put it in your recycle bin. Heinz ketchup, kind of same factor. You, you would like to try to get some of that, or all of it really, out of the, the container before disposing it into the recycle bin. And that's part of what everybody struggles with, is it takes more time. It takes a little more time to do the right thing. And, and it's getting better, it's truly getting better. But, good question, it's a great question. Someone asked me, do I crush my cans or not crush my cans? Aluminum cans? And, and the, the answer to that is you don't. You, you basically want to leave your packaging in its original form. And Kevin, please correct me if I'm wrong. Kevin does a great job explaining this better than I do, but if that answers your question. Ideally, you want to get the food contaminants out before disposing it.
So if I recall, the last time we had a presentation, there was a lot of anxiety and confusion about recycling, and some people were saying it was no better than 50%, but actually, four year, three years ago, you're in the 80s and you're still in the 80s.
Correct.
So what would it take to get to 90 and cost our consumers less?
So ideally, it goes back to the participation, separation, and education, right? Not to refer back to that, but the market, so it's a supply and demand, obviously, most commodities the same way. It's coming down, in, in a good way. So the, the price we pay per ton is coming down in a major way. Just referencing back the, the horrible example a couple of years ago, 105 tons per, per, $105 per ton. It's now dropped to 5230, 36, I think it is, 5234. And it seems to be continuing in that trend. So to your question, if we do nothing, it's probably going to stabilize. But if we do better, I try not to make promises I can't keep, but if we do better, there, it is a plausible idea that recycle will become, could become more free, if you follow my drift. Like, the price should come down, and if there's a wash on it, we would have no problem, or even if that was a rebate for it, we would have no problem giving back to the consumers for the participation of it. Ideally, that's what we'd like to see happen, is you pay nothing for recycle, it's your efforts and doing the right thing that matter. And once again, I'm trying not to make promises I can't keep.
I agree completely. Some, some folks are always in search of a number, they want a percentage. So that percentage is relatively constant, even though the Chinese market has fluctuated. I'm, I'm more moved by your other arguments, I think we have a moral and a social obligation to protect our environment and to recycle. Notwithstanding, we have a lot of visitors who don't care, aren't familiar with recycling, and I think, so if we're at 84%, we can still do better, and I think that's what we need to work towards.
Yes, sir.
You're right, it's educational to some degree.
Yes, sir. I, I agree, and, and to your point, you know, the, the more we can keep out of the landfills, it just, it's just better for the environment as a whole. You can't control the tourists much, but decal, signage, education, you know, if people on the beach that, that visit here are talking, hey, don't do that, you need to put that over here, that's, that's the goal, right? Is the common theme of, we need to be doing the right thing for the right reason.
Thank you.
One, one last thing, and I know you're not here for any ultimatums, or put you on the spot, or anybody else on the spot, and, and I don't want to do that, sir. But my question is, and you piqued my interest when you said, if the numbers can get even better than 84%, that would be a, a nice move forward, and maybe we can lessen some stuff. We fought like heck to get our budget under control, which you heard. And in the midst of all that, we learned that our people are, are being charged $771,000 a year to pay for the recycle carts. I sure would, and no ultimatums of any kind.
Right.
But I was encouraged when you said, if those numbers can get better, the numbers are 771, can go down to 510.
Once again, it's plausible, and, and I wouldn't tell you that unless I was confident in what I'm saying. I can't predict the future of the market, obviously, but it is a plausible idea to get that number down for you. Power in numbers, you know, you, you have a great participation rate, and I'd like to pass along those savings to, to everyone, not just your town, but it is a plausible idea that, that number can, can start coming down as opposed to inflation bringing it up, because it is a supply and demand in a market. So I, I'm, I would like to see that happen for you. I would like to be able to provide that as a, a talking point, so I can, you know, hopefully be up on the bar with, with your colleague there.
Look, one, one last thought on that, and, and thank you for tolerating this.
Yeah, absolutely.
When I walk in the grocery store, people will say, we're paying $771,000 a year for someone other than us to make some money. So we're paying money so somebody else can get our stuff, and then they go sell it to somebody. So tuck that away in the back of your mind, if you would.
Absolutely. And it's, it's a justifiable question, that's hard to answer, because corporate, big business, and I would probably revert that back to, you're actually going to benefit in the long run through the recycle process and the lack of new, new products being made. So you may be helping another company make more money, but the fact that you're getting less products going into the landfill, new products manufactured, you know, another 10, 20, 30, 50, 100 years in our lives, that's worth a few dollars.
Just one quick question on the Polycart rollback service, if I could. So pre-COVID, that was a service that was provided to us. Post-COVID, that went away.
Okay.
Is that the same for other communities that you serve as well?
If I understand your correction, or your question correctly, yes. And I, I wasn't here at that time, so I may be speaking slightly uneducated, but we do not offer rollback services for any community, a, any town. And I, I have a feeling it's due, the transition was made due to labor and staffing due to the COVID era.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I would just like to take a second to recognize Kevin Fisher. He did make a long trip here, and, and he's a, is a good colleague as well to, to help with this, so.
Answering questions, other questions on recycling?
I think we're good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming anyway, Kevin.
Thank you for staying at 84 and above, hopefully. Okay, we have one last presentation, and that is Ocean Rescue, OKIFD. And you, sir, are on the clock.
First off, I just want to say thank you. I noticed our name was up there on the captain's presentation a couple of times. I want to thank everybody, thank council, manager's staff, and especially our citizens, the tremendous support that y'all have given us. When we were talking in budget, one of the things that was talking is the Ocean Rescue program, and what, how it came about, and, and just some, some basics about it. And so our founder of the Ocean Rescue program is Mike Young, and he's going to give you a little presentation here. And Emery, you want to play that little video first? It's a little thing about the training that we've been doing.
All right, guys. Thank you. So I'm just going to run through this for you, kind of tell you guys a little bit about what we actually do out on the beach. From the video, you could see, you know, these guys are working hard, we get to play with some fun toys, and, uh, work hard. So I did some swimming, so here we go. Okay, who we are. Oak Island Fire Department members, Ocean Rescue. We are members with a love and passion for beach and ocean safety, members who have attended basic Ocean Rescue training, members who have worked or currently work, possibly are USLA lifeguard agencies, certified EMT basics, certified firefighters, who also hold additional trainings such as USLA lifeguarding, swift water training, and small craft rescue certifications. Here's a couple of pictures from last summer. One of the other things we do, other than just go out and swim and patrol and stuff, we take a big interest in educating, you know, the kids, the visitors. We do ocean safety classes. These are a couple of clips from Junior Firefighter Camp last year. Took the kids out on the beach, we always do a beach safety day during that week. Go over, you know, have them run some sprints and do some hands-only CPR, teach them about the flags, rip currents, all the hazards common to our island. What we do, kind of just went over that. So two-man, two-man patrols utilizing QRV 191 during peak beach hours of the summer season. Roughly, that's going to be from 1,000 to 1,700. We respond to all ocean rescues, water-related emergencies, and EMS needs on the strand. Educate beachgoers on flag conditions and other daily hazards in efforts to avoid water emergencies. Participate in community outreach education programs involving ocean safety and beach safety. Observe swimmers and ocean goers from a mobile patrol, respond to dispatches, and initiate rescue, rescue calls when necessary. So that means, rather than just sitting at the station and waiting for that call to go out, we're actually out there. If we ride up on someone in trouble in the water, we see it, we generate that call ourselves and get the rescue going, and additional resources on the way. How do we do it? So two-man patrol utilizing QRV 191, we locate our swimmer in distress, we execute proper comm with the rescue description, location, number of personnel entering the water. Basically, what's going on, where we're at, and what's about to happen. So an example would be from 191. 191, we're on scene, we have one swimmer in distress, we're at 16th Place, Ocean Crest Pier, we have one rescuer going in, second rescuer going in, please send me engine 171 and Brunswick County EMS. Conducted two-man rescue. Two-man rescue is basically, your first rescuer is going to hit the water with their rescue equipment, which is going to be a rescue can and fins, this is the equipment we train on. They're going to go a million miles an hour, as fast as they can, to get to that swimmer in distress, get them safely floating on the rescue can. The passenger is going to act as rescuer two. He is handling all the comm, calling into CCOM, and calling for additional resources, again, where we're at, what we have, and what's going on. Once he relays that comm, he's going to grab his equipment, and he's going to make his swim, immediately backing up rescuer one. They're going to create a chain, just like you guys saw in the video, and they're going to safely swim into shore. Just kind of covered that. So basically, a couple of things on that two-man rescue, when that first rescuer is going to that victim, okay? Everyone in the room has probably seen Baywatch at one time, okay? Unless it's unconscious, you're not going to go up to them. We have a method where you're going to shoot or glide the can safely, never throw it, it can knock them out. So you're going to shoot or glide that can to your victim, instruct them, hey, I'm firefighter Price, please grab the can, we're going to take you to shore. Make sure, you know, you give them clear instructions, grab the can, you begin your swim. Second swimmer comes in, he sends you as rescuer one, he's going to send you that second can, you're going to grab that can. So basically, it's going to look like this, you're hanging on to the firefighter in front of you's rescue can while towing the victim, and you can swim too. So now you've got a direct line, a chain, like you saw a couple of the gentlemen in the video, and you're going to create that rescue chain, swim all the way safely to the beach. Never let go of the victim until you get safely on the beach, at which time you will proceed with EMS procedures on the beach or transfer care to the oncoming responders. All rescues are always two-man rescues. We train on two-man rescues, lifeguards, beach patrol, firefighters, anyone that does ocean rescue, you never work alone. Training. All, all of our members are required to attend annual training prior to the start of beach season, typically mid to late April. All members are highly encouraged to maintain a yearly routine, fitness routine, cardiovascular and aquatics excellence by maintaining weekly run and swim regimens, one to two mile soft sand beach runs, and weekly swims at indoor aquatic facilities are recommended. Your swim should be anywhere from 200 to 1,000 meters, depending on the individual's skill level. All members should meet a, meet a minimum run swim standard set forth by the program director and fire chiefs. These standards will closely meet those of USLA. And for those of you who don't know, USLA, United States Life Saving Association, they are the governing body for all ocean rescue agencies. They're, they're the ones that set all our policy and training. Specific training to, for OIFD, members receive training, will receive training and properly demonstrate using the following equipment, the rescue can, the swim fins, and the rescue board. All members will be trained on single and multi-victim rescues and required to perform the technique. Trained on one and two-man rescue techniques and required to perform the technique. Trained on making a rescue on a conscious and unconscious victim. You get the training, and you're also required to perform the technique. All members are also required to perform a run-swim-run drill as kind of our qualification. There's a couple of different, there's two different levels of doing that, but either way across the board, everyone gets a, basically gets tested out on a run-swim drill. These are set forth by, again, program director and fire chiefs. Additional training we focus on here specifically to OIFD, rescue board technique, jet ski operations, everything from operating it to being the rescuer on the sled, to towing, backing it, and just properly driving it on the beach. All members should be knowledgeable on all ocean hazards and conditions common to Oak Island, as well as the flag warning system. 90% of the work we do is educating the beachgoers and using preventative measures such as warnings and education to avoid water emergencies. Education classes are provided with annual training, but it is only individual member to study and know your sciences such as your tides, rip currents, the geography of your beach, population patterns, et cetera. I'm a total nerd on this stuff, not everyone has to be necessarily, but you do need to be well-educated if you're working on our, our unit. You need to know your waters and know the beaches. Basic ocean safety, this is going to be across the board, wherever you're at in the world. Rip currents, long, longshore currents, shore break, slopes, submerged, other obstacles, heavy surf, violent surf, wind, marine life, water-related medical. Slopes and shore break kind of go together. If you haven't noticed, from 58th, pretty much all the way down to the West End, our beach is starting to develop a slope. That is what creates those dangerous shore break conditions on high tide. So something, again, we focus on to do training. Submerged objects, you're going to find those. Ocean Crest Pier is a good example, all the broken pylons. Anytime you're around a barrier, rocks, piers, anything like that, you're going to be dealing with submerged objects. Heavy surf, here on Oak Island, we don't get a lot of it unless we get like a storm front or tropical system, but pretty much every day, even on green flag, at some point during that day, that surf's going to go violent, depending on the wind. So we refer to it as violent surf, and that's the choppy conditions you see out here, primarily on a west wind, west-southwest, southwest wind, something. Apologize if I told you guys I'm kind of a nerd over this stuff. Common to Oak Island, again, these are the ones specific to us, the rips. And with the rips, Kaziah Street, Oak Island Pier, Ocean Crest Pier, and Kings Lynn, Ocean Crest And with the rips, Kaziah Street, Oak Island Pier, Ocean Crest Pier, and Kings Lynn, Ocean Side, those are our three most dominant rips on this island. The guys during training got a good taste of the one at Oak Island Pier. Pretty much every one of us were on the receiving end on that rip. It's a pretty fast swim out to make the rescue drill and a pretty tough swim in, but it was good training. So we deal with rip currents, strong long shores. So longshore, again, that's the one that's gonna pull you left and right down the beach, depending on the wind. Dangerous shore break on, let's say, from 58th West, that's something we're looking at, or violent surf, which is a daily occurrence. Heavy tropical surf from our hurricanes. Fast-moving inlets fed by long shores, again, Kings Lynn, all kinds of issues down there. Our three dominant ones, and then a little bit more about the slopes here. Everyone, the town, all the departments, PD, us, you got, everyone has been doing an excellent job with the new warning system we implemented a couple of years ago. So that's just a basic image of what your flags are. Double red, stay out of the water. Beach is typically closed at that point. Red, again, stay out of the water. Yellow, yellow, that's a moderate hazard, but that's typically when we have most of our calls. So again, that education piece, our guys when we're riding around on the beach, we're that, hey, what's the yellow flag? It's not as bad as red, or what's that mean? Can I still swim and be? We, we are very specific on what we tell folks who, who ask about that. Green, we always recommend, yeah, the hazards are low, swim with a buddy, know your limits. And then purple, you will see purple in conjunction with one of the other colored flags. That's gonna represent, you know, a high influx of jellyfish, you know, stingray situations, things like that, any, any marine life. Kind of breeze through that, guys, I don't want to take up too much time. Questions, thoughts, conclusions, and any, anyone here is always welcome to stop by the station if you want to talk about anything more in depth as far as the sciences and stuff like that. Thank you for your time.
First of all, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for what you do. It seems to me that what, the capacity we now have is a much, much shorter response time to a swimmer in distress.
Yes, sir.
I won't ask you to average that because it depends on where you are in the patrol, but with two patrols, we have a much greater chance of rescue and a much safer beach. I personally want to thank you for doing that, especially my grandchildren in the ocean. Thank you.
Well, we, like the chief said, we, every one of you guys sitting up there, we wouldn't be doing this without y'all, so we definitely appreciate the support. Thank you so much.
I do want to make the comment that last year, when we gave Mike a commendation, he was the rescuer last year on Memorial Day when we did have the near drowning with the four kids in the water. The three of them self-extricated, one of them did not. And Mike went in and got him, as I said at the time, I was coming across the dune and he was going under. And all I could describe is Mike did the Baywatch across there, pulled him out, got him out of the water, saved his life. And so, you know, the, the program paid dividends from the get-go. Between that, conjunction with what we do with water rescue and everything, it, it is a great program, and, and we really appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
If, if I may say, Mike, why Kaziah and 57, why are they the more dangerous places? Just history?
Sir, we could, you could come by the station and we can, we could talk about it the whole shift.
Bill, that gave us a timeline, remember?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Landscape.
A, a lot of it does have to do with the landscape of the beach and also the pier. So Kings Lynn, you've got a lot of different things going on. You've got a natural rip that starts kind, if you go out on the access and you look about, say, 100 yards to the right, there's usually a pretty dominant rip that opens up right there. Then you've got the inlet running, you know, 365 every day, always fed by long shores. So if you've got a tide moving the inlet, you've got your longshore coming through there, a lot of people get mistaken and get, will get caught up in that rip because it's super shallow and low tide. A lot of people will get in trouble. You got basically three different directions of water down there. As far as the piers, something about the way the bottom of the beach is shaped by the actual construction of the pier will always make a natural pool, and then when you add in the geography of the large sandbars around there, anytime you get the breaks in those sandbars, you're looking at basically a massive moving channel of water going out.
Got you. One o, one other thing, it was so impressive to watch the film of the drone dropping the, the safety equipment out into the ocean. So I want to thank you, Chief Price and Town Manager Kelly, for making that happen.
It's, it's a, it's a tremendous, I think it's a tremendous asset that we're gonna be able to, hopefully we don't have to utilize this year, but it's there, it's another tool in the toolbox. And, you know, that's, we already found out the other day, we had a, a reported kayak in distress, and the drone would just happen to be right down the road, and he was up in the air and out, and within three minutes identified that, that we're not in distress and they were flying in, and it saved a lot of resources from having to deploy. So it's, uh, it's, it's becoming, it's all coming together in a, in a good plan.
Good deal. Thank you all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We're at the point in our meeting where we can, if we choose, adjust the agenda. Are there any adjustments?
I would like to make a request for an adjustment.
Proceed, sir.
If you'd consider. I would like to consider, under New Business, Section 5, that we move 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4 to the consent agenda.
Mr. Martin, I, I have some specific questions with regard to 5.2 and 5.3 that I would like to clear up before we approve those.
I mean, they're just annual renewals of those contracts, but if, if you have questions, that's fine.
I think we're gonna honor our, our norm. If there's an objection, we're not gonna move it to consent.
Yeah.
So...
What about the ARPA 5.4? We talked about that during the budget workshop already.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I have one note to make. Under the consent agenda, number four, the ordinance amendment for the dog ordinances, we wanted to add the word electronic throughout that last sentence with fences and collars. So if we could just make that notation, so it's a little clearer. It's on page 61, I believe.
Change there. I have no objection to that. Is there any objection to that change? Okay, so this note there is a change to that code. So at this point, I think we're gonna take a three-minute break.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor? We stand in recess for three minutes.
Mayor Protem, Bach, and council members. Very brief remarks, just in regards to the recycle. I'm very much in favor, and I agree with Mr. Bach's comments about it being morally the thing to do and for our future generations. But I'd just like to say something that probably you don't hear, and that is just observing the contractor that we have for our, for our recycle, both solid waste and recycle. They've got a really good group of employees and, and good and well-managed. I see these people, and they're working hard, they're working fast, they're working efficiently, and I rarely ever see any piece of debris drop that they don't go and make sure that gets picked up. So we, and, and managing an operation like that with so many people, I think, really have to feel that we're dealing with the right people. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Fred Paddock. I live at 235 Northeast 77th Street, down by Yacht. And I, I want to thank the mayor, Protem, and council for your hard work in, in navigating the complex issues of our town. I really appreciate it. I wanna, I wanna thanks, thank you for passing that Heritage Tree Amendment. I thought that was a great move, and to preserve the trees on Oak Island, that's, that's so important. And it, and it really touched me personally. I was wondering about the heritage neighborhoods and the heritage houses that we have here too, and I just wanted to kind of make a statement about that. Where I live, that neighborhood's a, began as a blue-collar neighborhood, small lots that, you know, folks could bring a camper or a trailer out there and afford to be near the beach. And I think it was planned that way by Middleton, if I'm not, if I'm correct on that, that everybody should be able to enjoy the island. And not just doctors and lawyers and people of wealth, but the common guy, the worker, you know, bringing his family down here for the weekend. And I, I love, I love my area, the island. I love the characteristic quaint old trailers from the 60s and 70s and, and the low-profile cottages and bungalows, even some of the newer ones, you know, that, that are being put up that are, are single-level and then kind of keeping with the whole atmosphere of it. But there's also, there are also some really big still houses being built, and so far I haven't seen triple stories down in my neighborhood, but certainly the double stories, you know, block and views and, and just creating a different, different feel, you know, than, than what is, what is the heritage of that area. And so I, I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, it's, it's a little bit disturbing. And, you know, as you process thinking about keeping all our heritage, that's important. I'd like to show a couple of pictures. I know, I didn't realize how fast time goes. To bring this one up, this first one, it's a picture I painted on Beach Drive. It's a, it's a house called The Coffee Pot. There it is. And I didn't have a photo, so I brought in a painting that I did, and it's one of my favorite paintings. We, we used to stay there in the 90s, and we, we used to sing out there on a deck and, and write songs, and it was beautiful. The second picture shows what's there now, and that, it really broke my heart. So I'd go, I'll drive down that, that road and, and look and see The Coffee Pot, and it's not there anymore. Instead, there's this three-story, four-by-four block building, and that one's by itself, and I've seen them where they've got like six in a row. It just completely blocks out the sky, you can't see the ocean. And I'm just concerned that we go the direction of Carolina Beach, or even worse, Myrtle Beach, you know? And I don't know if there's anything that can be done to mitigate that, but just wanted to bring that up, and thank you for your time and your ears.
Thank you for your picture.
Good evening. My name is Tony Morgan. I live at 4808 West Beach Drive, and tonight I'm here speaking to you on behalf of the Lockwood Folly Inlet Association on the importance of keeping Lockwood Folly open and safely navigable. I believe you all were emailed a copy of a recent study on the economic impact of the Carolina Beach inlet. Many parallels can be drawn with our inlet. And this study indicated that 12 to 16.7% in loss of property values if the closest inlet is not navigable and vessels have to go further to the next closest inlet. Commercial fishing vessels, charter boats, tour boats, recreational fishing boats, and pleasure boats utilize the inlet. The economic value of that to our community is enormous. Boaters pay tax on boats, boat trailers, docks with lifts. Boaters strongly support gas stations, sandwich shops, bait and tackle stores, outfitter stores. And currently, there are 50 docks being built to be sold at Blue Water Point Marina, where most likely they would use Lockwood Folly inlet. The environmental impact is huge. If Lockwood Folly is, is not open, water quality of the ICW, Montgomery Slough, and Davis Canal would deteriorate due to decreased tidal flushing. This would affect populations of fish, shellfish, birds, and invertebrates. This would impact fresh seafood markets and our ability to access safe, safety eat fish, shrimp, oysters. It would further, it would further the negative impacts of property values due to reduced water quality and increased swimming advisories. When the dredging was not performed a few years back, we had multiple swim advisories during the main swimming months. Any given summer day, there are lots of boats at the point and tons of swimmers. Not being able to utilize Lockwood Folly inlet is, in an emergency, could drastically reduce rescue response times. Per the Carolina Beach inlet study, probability of survival of a man overboard scenario is reduced by 13.2% in good weather and 18% in bad weather if the inlet is closed. I believe the town of Oak Island needs to do its share of contributing to the dredging, maintenance, and improvements to Lockwood Folly inlet. This month, the town of Holden Beach has contributed into the project scheduled later in May. December of '23 and January '24 was covered by federal funding, and June of '23, Holden Beach, Brunswick County, and the state paid for dredging. Also, on April 12th, the Holden Beach Commissioners voted unanimously to approve funds for another dredging project. So I'm asking your support on keeping Lockwood Folly inlet navigable for financial health and safety reasons. But in addition to that, I was told tonight that the town of Oak Island has plans later this year to pay its part of dredging, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have Glenn Baker, but the topic was the first public hearing. Did you mean to sign up on the general comments?
I did, because I won't be here for minus 18:00.
Well, the hearing was continued, though. I don't know.
It is.
We haven't let anybody else speak on it.
Are you gonna be around in July?
No, I'll make sure.
I'll give you three minutes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Glenn Baker. I live at 110 Northeast 16th Street. Good evening, council members and Protem, mayor. I stand before you tonight to address a matter of great concern. The proposal to permit the Cape Fear Regional Jet Port to install two electronic billboards along Long Beach Road. Let me be unequivocal, I am firmly opposed to this proposal. This proposal goes against our guiding principle document, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which is right here. And we've discussed it before and other issues with the billboard on Middleton. Why even bother to rewrite it if we're not actually going to follow it? Why spend the man-hours? I urge you to consider the, the purpose behind these billboards and whether they align with our zoning regulations and Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I believe that they do not necessitate a special use consideration. Allow me to articulate my opposition clearly. As a resident deeply invested in the well-being of Oak Island, I am convinced that allowing billboards within our community would bring about adverse effects on our town's character, environment, overall quality of life. Firstly, billboards are emblematic of visual pollution, disrupting the nature, the natural allure of our coastal landscape. Oak Island is renowned for its picturesque vistas and pristine beaches, drawing visitors and residents alike. Introducing billboards would tarnish these views and diminish the allure of our town as a cherished destination. Moreover, billboards are infamous for generating noise pollution, disrupting the tranquility of our residential areas. The constant barrage of advertising can be highly intrusive, disturbing the peaceful ambiance that defines Oak Island living. Furthermore, there is ample evidence to suggest that billboards have a detrimental impact on property values. Studies consistently show that properties near billboards experience a decline in value due to their visual clutter, noise pollution, and negative perception about the area, i.e. South Harbor. Such a decline could have profound economic ramifications for homeowners in our broader community. Additionally, permitting billboards could establish a perilous precedent, paving the way for increased commercialization and urban sprawl. The distinct charm and character of Oak Island are invaluable assets that must be safeguarded for our generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
And John Phillips.
Mayor Brochum Bach, City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is John Phillips. I live at 112 Northwest 27th Street here on Oak Island. Short intro of who I am. We bought our house here in 2007, lived in Raleigh, and did the weekend commute, not every weekend, but times that we could get down here. Moved down here full-time in 2016. Wanted to talk about recycling, and I picked tonight to talk because they were here. I talked to them in the break, so they know what I'm talking about. The schedule for recycling, and I'm going to exclude the beach, which has the on-season, off-season difference for obvious reasons. We get trash every week. Certainly doesn't make sense to do recycling every week, but to do it every other week makes it difficult to know when my trash is going to get picked up. I've got a calendar here. It happens to be August 24. Can anybody here, without having looked this close, tell me when my recycling days are in August? I asked them, GFL couldn't tell me. So I have a suggestion. Why don't the city negotiate with GFL? And because there's different zones, different areas, whatever, they could say, Zone 1, my zone, could be the first and third trash pickup would be recycling. Therefore, I could look in August and say, okay, the first Monday in August is the 5th. The 3rd is the 16th. Those are my recycling days. I could pick any standard calendar and know which days I'm going to recycle. If you only do the first and third, that would be '24 pickups, not '26. That's about an 8% reduction. Whether that's a reduction in cost or just a reduction in the wear and tear in their equipment, I don't know. That doesn't matter. Twice a month, there'll be the first, the 3rd, and the 5th. If you don't need the 5th, you get the reduction. If you have the 5th, you're at the same where you are now, but you can still look at a standard calendar and determine when it is. One of the things that came out of the budget, the first item, was to increase customer service. You could increase customer service to residents, full-time, part-time, visitors, by saying first and 3rd or second and 4th, however it works out for all the zones. Again, I didn't go through the detail. I'll leave that to people at a higher pay grade than I have to go through the details. But just a recommendation on the schedule for recycling. Make it easier for people to know when it is and easier to communicate. Maybe save some money. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that is everyone.
Hey, Council reports. Carter, would you like to begin?
Thank you. Just want to mention that I had the opportunity last week to attend the Biways, Spring Meeting Biways is Beach Inlet and Waterways Management. It was a full day and a half, listening to folks talk about their organizations. Every conceivable entity who has anything to do with our coastline was there. And for me, as a new council member, it was a great opportunity to learn who all the players are, what they do, and how we all work together to protect our shoreline and waterways. I'd also like to mention the three households that have been impacted in the last 10 days by the devastating fires and just say that I'm so proud of our community. You all have rallied around those folks in so many, many different ways, helping as you could. They all have long roads ahead of them. And I encourage you to stay in touch with them. Sometimes they just want somebody to sit and talk to and tell you about the experiences that they're having. I will mention that this Thursday at 5:00, there's a fundraiser for Carrie and Ron Bender. They're the folks who live on Northeast 54th Street. This is at Lazy Turtle at 5:00. And you'll have an opportunity to meet Spike, the Border Collie, who was rescued by a very brave citizen who went into the house and actually got that dog out. Finally, I would say thank you to everyone for all your texts, emails, and phone calls the last couple of days regarding items that were on our agenda. It definitely takes a village to protect our paradise. And I'm grateful for each and every one of you and for your participation and your willingness to be engaged. So thank you.
Councilman Craft?
Yes. Councilwoman Carter, the mayor, and myself, we're the three-person search committee to help the town find an executive search firm in our pursuit for a town manager. So that job is concluded. We've taken care of that. So now I want to encourage the council. It's been a week, and I want to encourage the council that we, the five of us, need to get together without much further delay and come up with our profile and start thinking about that as to what kind of language we want. But other than that, I was going to say what Terry said about the event at Lazy Turtle. I'm not a music buff, but there will be different musicians at 5:00, 6:00, and 7:00. So I do plan on going down there during some of that. God bless Oak Island.
Councilman Chulo?
Thank you. Just two things real quick. So Councilman Craft and I have gotten together. You know, we've, all of us have spoken extensively about community engagement meetings and starts and stops, pre-COVID. COVID came, they stopped. So good news is, so June 11th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the rec center. And we'll make sure we have it on social media, on Facebook, or be on the town website, is Councilman Craft and I are going to do a community engagement meeting. We can only have two there because of the quorum rules. And it's an opportunity, just come and talk, you know, give us feedback, opinions, what's working, what's not. So an opportunity to be heard, to give you back your voice. We all campaigned on opening up, expanding community engagement meetings. So I'm pleased that we're going to, that'll be the first one. And I suspect we'll continue. It'd be great if all five of us, six of us, could be involved in those. And maybe there's a way to work there around the quarments. But for this one, so June 11th is the first one. The June Town Council meetings will move to June 18th as opposed to June 11th. Secondly, at the June 18th Town Council meeting, we will bring up again is the recommendation to send to Planning Board, a large house recommendation. So would love to see just as many people as we possibly can share your opinions, share your opinions with us. And the motion will simply be to send it to Planning Board for that to take a couple of months and to massage it, take a look at it, and find what works. So rather than, we're not going to vote at that point, we're simply going to vote to make a recommendation. Thank you.
Councilman Martin?
Yeah, just quickly. First and foremost, definitely prayers going out to the community over the last couple of weeks. Every one's been added to prayer lists where I could populate those. So just continue to rally, as Councilmember Carter pointed out. If we just continue to rally around our people and love on them and help where we can and pray for them, it's greatly appreciated. And then just quickly, I'm glad that we pushed through the budget cycle because now for the Cape Fear RPO board, we now enter our busy work session where we go into prioritizing state transportation projects. So we'll spend the next several months collecting data and meeting and voting and prioritizing and scoring transportation projects in our area for all of Brunswick County. So I'm looking forward to that. Last year's cycle was interesting and fulfilling, and this year's cycle should be even more so since now I'm a voting member this year instead of an alternate. So I'm looking forward to that work. Thanks.
And I'm going to forego my report and instead try to deliver the mayor's report. I think most of us know that her husband, God rest his soul, was a Marine, and she has an affection and an affinity for things military. May is Military Appreciation Month. And one of her affiliations is with Blue Star Mothers. And she has a proclamation which asked the clerk to enter into the record. She's disappointed she couldn't deliver it tonight, but she will deliver it to the Blue Star Mothers Organization. And she said, you know, I want, John, I want you to deliver that message about military appreciation. And I thought, wow, how do you do that? And then it occurred to me, virtually all of us, who we really think about it, can deliver that message. So my grandmother, Catherine, in 1942, was a Blue Star Mother, three of them. All three Bach men, her husband, my father, and his twin brother were in the war in the Pacific. And she was singular in her neighborhood, having that many men serving. And that pride was later altered dramatically when my uncle Neil Splain didn't return. And she was then a Gold Star Mother. So I think as we go through this month, we should think about our military, especially active and deployed military and their families and the pride they feel, but also the anxiety they feel every day. And that was the message the mayor wanted delivered, and she will eventually get to deliver her proclamation in person. Okay, and we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda. Is there a motion somewhere out there?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the modifications that were noted earlier.
V4, added to consent, and some language suggested by the clerk in the dog ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. We're moving along, you know, warp speed here. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I'll be brief here. A paving contractor has started some of the contract work, and Scott has given the information to Mike, which he has incorporated into the town's webpage. Work continues on the cabana for the handicap parking area and also the circle, which is the turnaround on Southeast 46th Street, hoping to have that open by Memorial Day. Also, staff has completed a draft RFP for contracted, the arperist service. And we'll be distributing that to council for them to take a look at it so we can get that out, so we can get that person brought in. And a reminder that the budget public hearing is on May 28th at 6:00 p.m.
And I will note for the record, our attorney unfortunately is also under the weather tonight, so there's no legal report. We have next, under all business, finally. We have been anticipating the revised draft of the UDO, and there are 70-some pages of it. And by agreement with Mr. Kirkland, I think all of us discussed this in the briefing sessions, we will break that bulk of material, which is dense and yet important to be read thoroughly, into pieces. And Mr. Kirkland has recommended a workshop schedule to be developed, to do it in smaller pieces so we can assimilate it. I have asked Mr. Kirkland, and he has graciously agreed, to give us a cheat sheet of the highlights of the most significant changes and their likely impact. So we will have a guide through the forest of the 70 pages. And with your permission, Mr. Kirkland, I think I'm going to move on because... Okay, fair enough. So that takes us to consideration of reissuing our request proposals for a professional engineering services slash parking assessment. And this is your item, Mr. Chulo, right?
Absolutely. So back on December 19th, we voted to publish an RFP. Unfortunately, due to my ignorance, I requested a, or we requested a 90-day turnaround. Unfortunately, we had no takers. So I'll take the full responsibility for that. So we now want to republish an RFP for a parking engineering firm, infrastructure engineering firm. We're going to give them six months, so that'll be to the end of the year. So we've already voted for it. We voted to commit $75,000 to an engineer, $1.1 million in paid parking revenue. We get an engineering firm in here. They can realign parking bumpers, put a strategy together, LSV-only parking lots. There's a lot they can do if they can find an extra 200 or 300 parking spots. We look at what that opportunity can be for us to generate additional significant increase in revenue. So my motion would be to...
Yep, keep going.
To keep going. The motion would be to republish an RFP for a structural, physical infrastructure assessment.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. You brought it this far, let's get it home.
Discussion? No?
I'm glad to see this come back up and happy that we've readjusted our timeline. It's been our practice that when we don't have in-house expertise, we do go out for those services, and that's exactly what we're doing here. So I think it's a good thing.
Well, it's an interesting situation because we voted for it once. So I'm loathe to do anything but vote for it again. However, I would say, to extend my colleague's comments just a bit, optimizing the system for both efficiency in terms of finding a spot, being able to park, organizing parkings without chaos is the prime goal. And additional revenue, obviously, we saw in this budget, is critical to us because at some point, it's either that or raise taxes. And I also hope that the study will point us, at least in a general sense, at the direction of what else can be done. What kind of transport system can we have on the island or off the island? How might we manage that? What's the best way to organize traffic flow? All of those things we've been doing, but without a professional traffic engineer. So that makes sense to me. Money invested to make money, to make a better system, is well spent, I think.
Well said.
One quick comment from me. My only concern is with a six-month delivery window, if this work doesn't start till July, if we're fortunate enough to find somebody, then that means it ends in December, and we are at the end of the two-year contract for paid parking. So are we going to be able to turn around the analysis from this report in time to make any changes to renew paid parking contract? Or I'm just worried about the timing of trying to get everything done now in December, January timeframe, when a new parking season will be upon us and with a new contract. So that's my only concern.
Reasonable. Further discussion? If not, Adam Clark?
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bach?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
Yes.
Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Hang on. The next one is yours as well. Councilman Chulo, under new business?
This one is a motion to review Section 2.15 Height Limit Exemptions of our UDO. During our quasi-judicial hearing on April 9th, I brought up the subject of the types of mechanical apparatus which are exempted from height restrictions set by the UDO. I asked staff to specify what elevators, mechanical apparatus, and it was hard to get at that. I believe the Oak Island community is desirous of reducing or eliminating the number of exemptions to the height limitations of Section 2.15. This was a subject which was hotly debated in 2019. At that time, a number of exemptions were removed from our UDO. We have more work to do. It's in the best interest of our community to eliminate as many exemptions as possible, if not all exemptions, to our height requirement. And I'd like to make a motion that we instruct the Planning Board to review Section 2.15 Height Limit Exemptions of our UDO, secure an itemized list of all current exemptions, including mechanical apparatus, which should be brought back into code subject to established height requirements. The motion asks for this review for the September 2024 Town Council meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion is seconded. Discussion?
This came us as a surprise when we were brought with the hotel on the beach that there were mechanical devices can go higher. So I'm interested to see what the pros and the cons are and what the study shows and what other... and what the study shows and what other towns have done. I think we need an answer.
Other points of discussion?
If this gets approved to go to Planning Board, I would encourage Planning Board to dig deeply into state statute because I believe this may have been addressed many years ago by voter referendum. So I'm not quite sure if there is a resolve that there's a path forward to try to overturn or bring this back to the, to a referendum when it's been now codified in state law for so many years. But that's my only concern.
I think that, I don't disagree with you. I think the 35-foot and 41-foot height limits were set by, through session law in 2005 and subsequently voter referendum. What the session law said was that you ask a yes or no question on the referendum. It doesn't, didn't say, didn't expand further on what qualifies as exemptions. And I've tried to find how those exemptions came to be. And if you look at our UDO on MuniCode, it references three amendments, three amendment dates. And so then I dug in a little deeper and went back to those and found the minutes in February and March of 2019. And while there was discussion about the height limits, there was never really any discussion about what qualified as an exception. So for me, the unanswered question is, who decided what was an exception? And how did it get added to the ordinance? And so I'm anxious to get some answers on that.
And I know administration has a position and has done some research. If the motion carries, I assume that you will be intimately involved with the Planning Board in discussing the technicalities of this and possibly our attorney when he returns. So rather than, I'm all about not prolonging meetings. So if this motion carries, it will go to the Planning Board and the administration will have a chance to explicate their position, right? And yes, there was a point, it was a, I'm being politically correct here. There was a structure that was built that annoyed virtually all citizens. And it turned out that structure was legally erected because there was an exception. And then council asked administration to take away all of the potential exceptions that weren't warranted by code or needed by law. So we're going back to that. That's the starting point again. So...
Find out where we stand.
Further discussion? Are we...
Right. Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Mayor Portembach?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
Yes.
And Councilman Martin?
No.
All right, to, Councilman Carter, I'm going to ask you, if you wouldn't mind, to, the next set of items are water rescue. You had questions?
Yes.
And I would like to note my apologies to the council as I've compared my notes. Actually, item 5.2, the agreement with Oak Island Water Rescue is okay. So if we can just go ahead and move on that, my real questions are in the lease agreement.
So with respect to V2, water rescue, is there a motion on the floor to accept?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Is there discussion? All in favor? Okay. Now, if you continue, Councilwoman?
Yes. Yes. The questions I have on item 5.3 have to do with the lease for Oak Island Water Rescue. And it's unfortunate that Attorney Eads is not here because I think he's probably the one who's going to have to answer my questions. In the subject summary, it says that we leased the land for the station that the station is on. But in the first item, the lease of premises in the lease agreement, it says that we demise and lease to the West Sea all the real property and improvements thereon. So real property is the land, the improvements are the building. And my question is, who owns the building? Is it the town of Oak Island or is it water rescue?
So during the break, we talked to the Oak Island Water Rescue and the Fire Chief Lee on where he went off to. But about that, and I think it was two, oh, there he is, right there. I think it was, if you all want to come up to the mic. I think it was in 2006 is when they used their funds to construct the building. I think Chief Price has looked up the deed and it's basically addresses the same parcel where the skate park is. Am I right so far? Okay. So our question was the same thing. And the way it diverts back, if they ever decided to leave or close or do anything like that, all that would be diverted back over to the town. So the building at that point, in our view, without Brian's interpretation, would then, the building would become part of the town.
And that's correct. And that is covered further in the lease. But you can't demise something you don't own. And so if we currently don't own the improvements on the property, we should just strike and improvements, and we're actually leasing the land to them.
If you look at the, if you look in the Brunswick County registered deeds and the property search, everything is, the building sketch, all the stuff that has to do with the land and the building is under Town of Long Beach, so, or Oak Island. And so, again, without having the exact legal opinion, if you pull up that property, that property with the building and everything else shows us as being the owners.
Okay. I'd like to get Mr. Eads to clarify that and just make sure.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'd have to stretch my memory back. It was a long time ago. But I can't remember if they ended up dedicating the building to the town at the time. We can research that further.
We could.
Your member?
I think we, rather than guessing, we should defer to council on this and get a definitive answer. Is your next question of similar import legally?
Yeah, the second question is on page 146, item 13, under insurance. We're calling for a different insurance under the lease than we're calling for under the agreement, the service agreement. The insurance listed under the service agreement is standard insurance. They should match. They should provide the same insurance in both situations. So I would ask Attorney Eads to look at that. And then finally, the last thing is, we just recently added an environmental and hazardous materials clause to our water tower leases to the cell phone companies. We don't have anything like that in here. I would ask that that be added. And also, a, an item that says there's no subletting of the property, that Oak Island Water Rescue is the only tenant.
Unless there's objection from council, I'm going to ask the clerk if she would kindly send these on to Mr. Eads. Understand, gentlemen, that there's full support here for your service. These are technical questions that are raised, and once raised, they need to be answered by our attorney. So I think you understand that, rather than us continuing down this road.
Correct.
Fair enough. You have the questions, correct?
Yes, sir.
One question, if I could, about the time sensitivity of this. Sometimes some requests we've sent to our town attorney are not returned in a timely manner. And how timely is this, that we need to get this resolved?
I believe we have a pretty good working relationship with them now.
Yeah.
Been able to continue the lease program going forward. I think by them listening and y'all giving them some vote of confidence tonight in y'all's discussion that the technicality part, that Mrs. Seitz can refer to Brian and get those answered, we can get something back to you, maybe on the 28th, when we have the budget public hearing, to get it done that night.
I don't think it expires until June anyway, so we have a little bit more time.
And there is a provision that there, if the lease runs out or we don't get it finished, they have a tendency from month to month. So we're not going to kick them out by any means.
It's a fair question.
To put you at ease, Mr. Monty, I don't think anything was brought up tonight that's earth-shattering. You could probably agree to it without legal counsel.
Yes, sir.
We just want the lawyer to sign off, but I don't think anything intimidated you.
We'll see what we can do to get you an expedited answer with a phone call once he recovers. Okay, fair enough. He said we need a motion to go into exec session?
Personnel?
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss specific personnel and to consult with the town attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11A, 3 and 6.
And if I could make one amendment, please, I'm sorry. But if it would just be for personnel for, and that would be A6, since the town attorney's not here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor? Stand adjourned.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. Counselors returned from closed session. No action was taken. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Adjourned.